The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Call this meeting to order. Looking for approval of the agenda.
No more additions to the agenda. I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion second. For discussion on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approval of methods. Our fourth.
I will second that.
Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Number one, closed session for Iowa code twenty-one point five C to discuss strategy with counsel and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent or its disclosure could be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation.
Need a motion to go into closed session with a roll call.
I will make a motion to go into closed session.
Second. Motion second for general hall.
Hey Johnson.
Yes.
Scott Rico.
Yes.
Miners.
Yes.
Hey, motion carries.
Anderson.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike.
Okay, you're there, Mike. We got you. Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay.
The three to the level?
How do you get the level?
Yeah, so we do a risk assessment called the Iowa Risk Revised, which as soon as they get on supervision, we do that. And that will give us the initial, you know, risk level. And then we have a case management assessment that we do that kind of just kind of keeps an eye on at things stabilizing and getting better or things kind of, is there more chaos and crisis and do we need to move up? So it's kind of a dynamic assessment. For folks that are on for a sex offense, they have a different, more specific assessment that I'm, it's not my specialty, but we have folks that are highly trained in how to do that one.
Would they be in the three to five?
Yeah, yeah, we, the lowest someone on for a sex offense can go is level two, just because of the nature of the crime. And they all get treated well. Generally, there's treatment, pretty intensive treatment involved with that as well. So. So those are the services we provide. So example, like if someone that's a level five has a history, maybe of violence or stalking, something that makes us concerned, we have GPS monitoring, which is real time. We can go pull points. We can see where they're at at any given time. But that's pretty expensive. So we try to again use that risk assessment to really drive those needs. So. So there's that. So we have our treatment menu, the just the kind of groups that we do provide to folks. And again, what we try to do is assess need. Not everybody needs a course on vi- you know, violence reduction. Not everyone needs a course for substance abuse. So we try to really guide what they're assigned to based on their assessed needs. Again, then there's also a resource issue with that. We can't put everybody in everything. So we try to try to determine that and assign there thereafter. So we are in the bottom third in the nation for incarceration rates. Ninety percent of those folks sent to prison come back out. And so we've been working pretty hard with the institutions in the area. We're putting tablets into the institutions that are locked down. So they can't just go out to wifi. But they can meet with assigned counselors in our district. Once they're kind of getting ready to be released to the community and so they can start doing some programming and get to know who their counselor is going to be. So that when they are released from prison to this, to our district, they know folks that have been doing some work on the tablets. So that's been another kind of cool thing that came out of that grant. So, and then just there's some contact information on the back. My name and number and emails there as well as our director. Jim Varland is the Treatment Services Supervisor. He's the one that kind of oversees all the programming, including Sex Offender Treatment Program, active program, which is for men convicted of domestic violence and women. And then our supervisor for the Ames Office is Steve Nave. That's all I have. Any questions?
So if you get someone that's been involved in a thing that has issues with drugs. Can you release it? Do you follow up, do drug tests on her once in a while or all?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. We have colors code, like, so like sometimes they'll call if their color is called, they'll come in. So it's randomized. Yeah, we do a lot of drug testing.
Mm-hmm. So we used to be, before the governor's rate line, but we're now on advisory board. So I sit on the second.
Oh, you do? Okay, good. Okay.
Zoom into the meetings I come to for.
Wonderful.
Questions that you want.
Yeah.
So the fourteen hundred and eighty dollars we pay, what does that go to now?
I have no idea.
What's the fourteen?
And it went up significantly this year. Cause it was like fourteen hundred and usually it was like eleven hundred or something. And I significantly, I know that's only three hundred dollars, but.
But, but yeah.
Yeah, it went up. Yeah, but that was like the first time they'd raised it in many, many years. So.
And Esha sits on the board too.
Okay.
I'm a man that asks when I still sit on the advisory board. And I said, yes.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know if they had a meeting.
No, so the, the thought was is to, once realignment happens, um, is to kind of get out and come to you. So we've been out visiting all twenty-two counties. Um, so just to kind of talk a little bit about our services and I think they'll try to have a meeting like once a year. But, you know, it just really changed the structure of our work. So that was kind of where we're at right now and just wanted some feedback too of, do you prefer this? You know, it's coming out to you annually, you know, just kind of getting some information about, you know, since it changed so dramatically once a realignment happened. Um, and we're still, you know.
I will give the annual, as far as yet.
Yeah. Well, we can come out anytime if there's questions or issues or anything like that. We have, um, a probation parole officer who lives in this area who primarily covers Carol County, Lisa, Lisa Bach.
Oh, catch.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. She's the one that we always have to find a place for. Yeah, we're doing remodeling.
Yeah, Deisha, I think sits on too. She's the J C.
Oh, sure. Okay. Yep. Okay, okay. Wonderful. Yeah, we're still, you know, that really one, we didn't know what was coming until they announced it. Um, and.
There's a lot of pushback.
Lot of pushback, um.
From this.
Correct. Yeah. Um, it's just the timeline and the timeframe was real tricky. So we're still, uh, sort of waiting through realignment stuff. I'll just put it that way. We're doing our best.
According to this map, you've got to be one of the biggest landmass.
Yes, yes, I think we are. And we're primarily all rural, you know? So you'll see some of the smaller ones, but they have, you know, a higher population center. So. Yeah, we can, it's a, you know, windshield time can be significant, you know, from here to Mason City is, is, uh, is a haul. So, and again, that was part of the reason we really wanted to create some virtual services for our clients because we're so big and spread out so that they could show up, but from their living room. So.
Any questions, Mike?
Well, I appreciate your time. Um, if you ever need anything or have questions or run into anything sticky, um, please reach out and we'll do our best to respond and get it fixed. So.
Thank you. All right. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, approved payables. We missed that's at this paper, Ian, or because, uh, invading is in the new motor grader. It ended up to well over half. We're looking at a million, twenty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars, eighty-seven cents.
Well, I had a couple of questions earlier this morning. I had them answered. They're going to be rebuilt out to a different county. So. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the payables of our net. Twenty-five thousand, nine ounces, eleven six dollars, eighty-seven cents.
I'll second that. The motion is second? All in favor of thing? Am I saying aye? Aye. Motion carries. I didn't know. What's that?
Who has the newspaper radio?
Gee, I wanted to trade with them today.
Trade last week, so you created the game.
Uh, that's on the down to paper signature.
Item numbers are reported as a bidding, being the top of danger. We're at, uh, eighty-seven point eight, extended completion of their job. And still close to two hundred thousand.
And today. Okay, item number four, set public hearing for fiscal year, plan by proposed budget tax levy.
Okay, so this is taking the place of what we used to have called the max levy. So the county is required to have two hearings on the budget. Um, this one is a little different. So the hearing has to take place in a separate meeting from the actual Board of Supervisors meeting. They can be held on the same day. But they have to be two separate agendas, two separate meetings. So I'm proposing to do the hearing like at nine o'clock on April first. So we'll post an agenda and yeah, um, it's just funny how it came out on April 1st. But anyway, so we would have the public hearing at nine with its own agenda. You hold the hearing and then close the hearing, close the meeting, and then we'll have a regular board meeting after that. I, uh, confirmed that that was fine. Um, it does not have to be on a separate day. It just has to be two separate agendas, two separate meetings, but they can be held back to back.
So we have to like go drive around the party and come back?
I don't think so. I don't think so. Um, and obviously we still have the proposed levy at four point six zero nine four eight for an urban, which is a reduction.
So what for? Oh, okay. So this doesn't include the home levy?
Well, yes and no. So the actual notice for this meeting is going to not include debt service. So.
So.
As far as the, I mean, the levy goes, I think it's the, the actual notice does not include the debt service levy.
So it's, it's the, our regular levies less the debt service and our debt services.
It's an eighty-eight cents? I don't know. I don't have it in front of me.
Rural.
No, the debt service.
Sixty-four, sixty-five.
Okay.
I would like to have that taken.
We can do that.
Okay. So anyway, um, and we, yeah, we can set what that levy is. I was just talking about the total levy because.
This, this notes does not include the total levy.
It does not. It does not include debt service. Um, and I guess I could have.
Taxing them these like school or D Mac.
No, this is just ours.
For all and we're.
Yep, just ours. Um, and the, the proposed urban levy is less than what it was in twenty-four at four point six zero nine four eight. And the rule is a reduction as well at seven point eight six four two eight. That includes the debt service, those levies. That's the actual total levy. The proposed levy is actually just the tax dollars you're requesting, and I believe it does not include debt service. But. The notice will be published according to what the Department of Management says we have to say in the notice. But you're right, the max levy never included like mental health or debt service. And I'm not a hundred percent sure. I haven't looked that close at this notice that we publish. If it includes debt service or not, I was thinking it didn't, but I might be wrong. Either way, we'll be publishing the correct.
So the news from today and that is your suggestion?
Yep, I'll publish it, the paper, um, we're required to post it on any social media that we have. So it'll be going on the county Facebook page. It has to be on the county website and then it has to be published in the papers. So, um, I'm just looking for a motion to, um, approve April first at nine for the hearing for this.
Second.
We have a motion in the second set of public hearing for April first, nine a.m. All in favor, sitting five, am I saying aye? Aye. I'm able for tips. Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, committee reports. All right, see you, Mike.
All right. You too.
I go first. Last week, Jean and I had CCGP at noon.
You wait just a second. I gotta write down that he left the meeting. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Um, Tuesday at noon, Jean and I had CCGP, Lear Corporation, or Carol Coopers gave a presentation on the Carol facility. It was kind of interesting what all they built there. Um, Wednesday, first floor punch list, um, zero, no, not even a nick of paint. Nothing was found, which is kind of unusual. Thursday night, three of us went to, uh, Farm Bureau meeting, Aaron Carroll, and, uh, talked about concerns, answered some questions they had. Friday, I went out to Rhodes, looked at payables, courthouse. And then at ten, Jean and I had union negotiations. At eleven, we had the conference board. This week, Tuesday, tomorrow morning, um, March executive meeting at the landfill. Then I'll be ISAC the rest of the week. Questions?
No. I, okay, you want to go, Jean?
Go ahead.
Um, let's see, I don't really have a lot for last week. And this week I just have the three days, the capital and the ISAIC.
Okay, um.
Number one day at the cap.
Last week had CCGP, uh, the, as Scott reported, we had a presentation by Lear. And they actually gave us a, what is it, deal of the plant? Also, and then Thursday night was Farm Bureau meeting. I thought that went very well. Uh, we had actually pretty lengthy discussion on a lot of topics. And, uh, uh, we were even thanked for some things the way we did things. Well, I was happy that it turned out. Uh, then Friday was AM's union negotiations, which we did settle and we probably will have a, we've got a tentative agreement now. We'll probably have a signed document by next week that was presented to the board. And, uh, then we had the conference board meeting that we set their, her budget for the year and also made those appointments. So. And then this week I have, uh, Wednesday, you brought us ISAC.
Did you, are you the one with radio and newspaper today?
And I'm going to say in the newspaper this week.
Courtney, next week.
Um, no problem.
Analyst, you need to.
Yeah.
Or town, do you remember?
Yep. Um, other than that, I don't have anything for next week.
Mike, a motion to adjourn. I was standing by my saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, yeah.
I'm not quicker than I thought it was going to.
There's that.